So I figured I just. Thank you.
I'm trying to unmute myself real quick.
Okay, Mr. Doyle is six o'clock. We're gonna call to order the hundred and ninety-six, ninety-third session of the tenth council.
No, this is the hundred and ninety-six.
Okay, the agenda says one hundred and ninety-third.
Maybe looking at a draft of the agenda.
We'll call to order the hundred and ninety-sixth session of the tenth council. Invocation by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Lord, for one more day. Thank you for waking us this morning, and, Lord, we are praying for our city, and we are praying for our leaders in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. All right, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Order. Miller. Edela.
I'm here.
Shramsky.
Present.
Taylor Burks.
Present.
Waterman.
Present.
I heard you talk. Waterman.
Yeah.
Williams.
Present.
Carter. Miller. Present, you have a form.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Pro Tem Carter and Councilwoman Miller.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Stand down, roll call.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Five, yes, no names.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. President, if I might?
Yes, Councilwoman Morton.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item number six up before the closed session, and to just receive items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and if possible, to put four and five to next week.
I support.
Wait a minute, let me make sure I got on it. Move six before the closed session. Receive. Was that twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen? And... I'm sorry, what was it, about four and five?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
And I supported it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm just wondering if five can be moved to next week without, is it imperative that we learn about it? We put this off a couple of times.
Okay, who are you pointing that question to, Councilwoman People?
Well, would of course be somebody from the IT department.
Hi, this is Matt Pickert. I'm okay with moving it if that's what we need to do.
Okay, any other discussion? Then roll call.
Yeah.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Five, yes, no names, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, which brings us to, now we need to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
Move.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Stand down, roll call.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
They received and filed.
Okay, agenda is approved, which brings us to item number one. Is there a motion to approve the October twentieth, two thousand twenty minutes?
Move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Stand down, roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Five, yes, no names, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, which brings us to item number six, I believe, which is adoption of the ordinance to amend the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System and provides a date of termination.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would ask that my colleagues would support this. This was talked in great detail at our retirement board meeting, and we're all in agreement with the date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So I would ask my colleagues to move in support of this.
I move.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Stand down, roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Edela.
Yeah.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Five, yes, no names, Mr. President.
Okay.
The council, I appreciate it. The retirees will really appreciate it.
Yes, I hope they will. Okay, it's been a long time coming, so hopefully that would be the good step. All right, which brings us to item number two. Attorney Chubb.
Good evening, Council. This evening, we're going to request a closed session pursuant to fifteen point two six eight to discuss an attorney-client privileged memo that's exempt from disclosure pursuant to MCL fifteen point two four three one G, the topic of which is purchases or potential purchase or sale of the Ottawa Towers in Phoenix Center.
Okay, do we have that link, Mr. Doyle?
I'm sending. You should have it now. But you need to do a move and support to go into.
Move.
Mr. Doyle, I do not have it.
I don't either. I just sent the link. Right, so where would be no confusion about which link? It was moved by Waterman and.
I would support.
Okay.
Okay. Waiting on the link to pop up, Mr. Doyle, but is there any discussion?
No, my link just popped up.
Okay, awesome. All right, so roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, yes.
Five, yes, no names.
Mr. Doyle, so we will go into closed session right now. This link will be, hold on. Council Pro Tem Carter just got here, so let me admit him into the room first, and he can vote on going in the closed session, if I can get it to work. Okay, go ahead and call a roll again for closed session.
Okay.
The clerk is muted.
Okay.
Oh, the link to go in the club, so, Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Edela? Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman. They had already voted to go in, so six, yes, no names.
Okay, so this link will remain open. I'm about to mute it.
Council President, with the direction, we will certainly get you the link for that. The goal is if this is approved tonight at council that we would report to Judge Rosen that there is a complete settlement, that the city has the capacity to do this settlement and that it would close on or about January 4th. So with that I can answer questions, provide any other insight that you can.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Gibbs?
Okay, we're waiting on everybody to come back. I don't see Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke, if y'all can call her and give her a.
Did she make it to the closed session?
She was in the closed session. She was on her phone.
Okay.
And I don't see, and I don't see.
Our caller.
And if somebody else can call Pro Tim Carter.
You can call Carter.
I can't call anybody. I'm hosting the meeting.
So Mr. President, if you would enable.
Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke, if y'all can call her and give her.
Did she make it to the closed session?
She was in the closed session. She was on her phone. And I don't see.
Our caller.
And if somebody else can call Pro Tim Carter.
You can call Carter.
I can't call anybody. I'm hosting the meeting.
So Mr. President, if you would enable screen sharing, so I'll be able to share my screen during the presentation. Cause right now.
Yeah, so I will be leaving, so I'm gonna assign. Oh, I can't assign anybody. The court reporter is not a host, so they would have to make you host, Mr. Doyle. So I don't know how that happened.
Okay, I'm, this is the court reporter. I'm working on that right now.
Mr. President.
If you just click on, if you just click on Mr. Doyle's name, you can make him host.
Okay, okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just to let you know, Dr. Doris Taylor Burks is trying to get in.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Doyle, you're the host.
Okay, Doc.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, roll call.
Carter.
Present.
Miller.
I don't believe this.
Peter La.
Yes.
Framsky.
Present.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Here.
Williams.
Yes.
You have, you have a quorum, Mr. President. So you actually need to get a move and support to come out of closed session.
A move to come out of closed session.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, we need to hold until Councilwoman Taylor Burks can get in. I don't understand what's her problem, but I'm trying to call her again. Because it makes no sense that she's not on this phone.
I called her. She was trying to get into her computer.
Mr. President, can we take about a five minute break and then I can figure out how to get her through here?
Yeah, yeah, the mayor's in the waiting room anyway, but no, we don't need to take a break. We do have a presentation from the clerk. Let him do his presentation.
Okay.
And then.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So actually, you need to first take the vote to come out of closed.
Okay, roll call on closed session.
I mean, I'll vote close. Peter La.
Yes.
Framsky.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Five yes, no names, Mr. President.
All right, while we wait on Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burks, if you could go ahead, Mr. Doyle. So if you could admit the mayor, I guess she's in the way.
I did, I did. But I just want to give an update on the election. As everybody knows, Election Day is one week from today. The polls will be open from seven AM until eight PM. Right now, you can still vote by absentee ballot. The clerk's office is open all this week until eight PM. And Saturday and Sunday, we're open from nine AM until four PM. Absentee voting ends at four PM on Monday, November second. As it relates to where we are with voter turnout, in 2016, the last presidential election, we had four thousand six hundred and four people who voted absentee. We've already fifteen thousand and ninety-eight absentee ballots, of which already ten thousand three hundred and sixty-two have been returned. So right now, we have a sixty-nine percent return rate. We're hoping that a lot of people will still return their ballots, and we are getting ballots back every day. But as you can see, absentee voting is way up from what it was four years ago. Overall, only twenty thousand than one hundred and forty-three people voted in totality in the 2016 election, forty-six hundred at the KV, and then fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine at the poll. So we had a forty-three point seventy-three percent turnout in 2016. So we're hoping to surpass that, and we're asking everybody to return their absentee ballots. I talked about our hours, and again, this weekend will be open from nine until four on both Saturday and Sunday. When it's all said and done, we will have extended the clerk's hours, eighty-five and a half hours addition. So over two additional weeks, when you add in all the additional evening hours and all of the additional weekend hours, we've been open. We've really tried to make ourselves accessible to allow everybody to vote. This just talks about when people receive their absentee ballots. I want to make sure, you know, they've both sides of the ballot. If they make a mistake, they can contact the clerk's office. The main thing, the reason why we are have to void absentee ballots is if the envelope is not signed. So we encourage everybody to sign and date and seal their envelope. And again, your signature should match your signature on your driver's license or state ID, because we're connected to the state's website, and that's the signature that is in the computer. So that's, everyone needs to be mindful. That you do have the option to vote a straight ticket, or you can mix your ticket. That's your own choice. We do have a drop box inside of City Hall. If you don't want to return it to one of the outside drive-up drop boxes, you can come inside of City Hall and return your ballot to the drop box that's located in side of City Hall. But in addition to that, we have seven drive-up ballot drop boxes. They have the city's logo on it. It says official ballot drop box. All of the drop boxes except for the one in Harrington Elementary are available twenty-four seven, open all the time. Harrington is only open from Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM, and the reason for that is they locked the gate at Harrington for security purposes for the school to prevent vandalism and things of that nature. So that drop box is only available Monday through Friday from six AM until six PM. You can drop your ballot in any of the drop boxes. It does not have to be the drop boxes in your neighborhood or your district. After after you return your absentee ballot to one of our official ballot drop boxes or by mail, you can check the status to make sure we receive your absentee ballot. You just go to michigan.com/vote. I do want to also let you know that the Office of the City Clerk, we've done two mailings, and we'll do an additional mailing. We've mailed that absentee voter postcard to all absentee voters, reminding them to return their absentee ballots, to return them early, to assign the back, giving them the drop boxes locations as well, too. We've mailed out a sample ballot to all voters who haven't requested an absentee ballot. Again, we've issued fifteen thousand absentee ballots, so that still means of over thirty thousand potential voters who haven't voted and could vote on Election Day. So they received a sample ballot. We'll send out an Election Day reminder mailing as well, and then we do plan on canvassing neighborhoods this weekend to remind people to return their absentee ballots, and that there is an election on Tuesday. We're doing everything possible to increase voter turnout and to assure that we get all of our absentee ballots back. I had mentioned earlier about that if you weren't able to come and get your absentee ballot to vote in person in the clerk's office, if you were elderly or sick or no transportation, we do have a service team. So I have deputized someone in my Jonathan Starks in my office, and the service team is primarily myself. We have visited residents, shelters, and hospitals as well. So what our model has been this whole election cycle, working to ensure that everyone can vote, and that's what we've been doing. Then these are, you know, the clerk's website, as well as our various social media things. And we will be putting a new video on the YouTube page that will be talking about all the things that we're doing to ensure that there will be safe voting at the precincts on election, or voters who don't want to vote by absentee. Actually, yeah, so that concludes my presentation, Mr. President.
All right, yes, I still don't see Councilwoman Taylor Burks, so. Hello? Okay, can we move on to the next item and call her one more time? I do have to leave, but I'm trying to wait for everybody to be able to vote.
So the next item on the agenda is recognition of elected officials. I know I have received a call from State Representative Brenda Carter. I don't know if she's still on the.
I'll tell you now, she had to leave.
Oh, she had to leave, okay. And I don't I don't know if there's any agenda address. I didn't receive any agenda address. And the next item will be number seven, Mr. President. This is from the Economic Development.
Yep. Madam Mayor, would you like me to present that?
Yes, that will be presented by Mr. Hatran Gied.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. What is in your packet and being asked? Kavadiya Inc. is a company that currently is in the Riker Building on here on Thirty-Five West Huron Street. They are expanding. They are a software engineering firm that does a significant amount of training and other videos for the Department of Defense, and they entered into an agreement to purchase One Hundred North Saginaw, restore that building to a new office so they could expand, and they have entered a development agreement with the city. Within that development agreement, they have to create a transportation plan for the youth and seniors, which they have actively started. They have to make an effort to hire and engage Pontiac contractors, but more importantly, for their business, and they have been able to hire two Pontiac residents as they start this expansion. They're in the midst of it, but they were delayed by COVID substantially throughout the year for the construction of their project. They have been through the zoning board of appeals, where they favorably obtained a variance to, for a certain construction material. They've submitted revised plans to the city that have been preliminary reviewed and final plans are being reviewed this week. So they're on track. What's before you tonight is, is that their original obsolete property agreement would have required Oakland County assessing to reassess the property as of the end of this week, according to the state tax rules. Because they were not able to complete the construction of their project because of the COVID, and I would also note when they got into the building, they realized that the foundation was crumbling, which is what caused all the brick to fall off the building. And so they had to fully restore the foundation to make the building usable. Again, all of those factors delayed them because they're not complete. If equalization were to assess them now, they would actually have a negative impact for their Oprah. And so what's being asked is that the council would just reaffirm the original grant of the Oprah to this property and extend their deadline for completion for one year to allow them to fully complete the reconstruction. They are anticipating hiring upwards of thirty-five additional engineers, all of which would be in the downtown, which would be a substantial impact for the community in the downtown area. So what's being asked, there's a resolution in your packet that would simply reaffirm the Oprah and extend their deadline. That would, if approved, would be passed, both the county equalization and the state to forestall the reassessment of the property until they're done with the improvement.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gibbs? Councilwoman Waterman, that's your district.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, not really. I figured that was probably the reason why they held up because of COVID, so I have no problem with it.
Does anybody else have questions?
I have no questions, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I could read the brief resolution into the, into the record for consideration of a motion if you'd, if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Pontiac to prove an application for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property to One Hundred North Saginaw by public hearing on March twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, and whereas the city has been informed of practical difficulties to the property that caused a reasonable delay in completing the necessary improvements to occupy the property and cause the proper reassessment of the property in accord with Public Act one four six of two thousand. And whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic and associated executive orders have further caused the project to be delayed through no fault of Kavadiya properties. And whereas the purpose and intent of the approval and the support stated in the two thousand nineteen resolution, supporting the approval remain true and accurate, and the requested extension is fully supported by the record presented to the city of the hardship in meeting the strict deadlines of the act and the approval. Whereas an extension of the time for completion shall defer the required reassessment of the property by Oakland County Equalization for one year, allowing the property to receive the intended benefit of Public Act one forty-six of two thousand twenty. Now therefore be resolved that the obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption certificate for the property known as One Hundred North Saginaw Tax ID one four dash two nine dash four two six dash zero two one is hereby confirmed, and the time for completion of improvements is extended for one year from the date hereof. It is further resolved that the exemption certificate shall be amended to reflect the beginning date of December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, and an ending date of of December thirty one, twenty twenty, and an ending date of December uh thirty one, twenty thirty two, and all other terms remaining as stated in accord with Public Act one four six of twel- two thousand as amended.
Is there a support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Roll call.
Edela?
Yes.
Dransky?
Yes.
Taylor Berks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Four yays, no nays, Mr. President.
Okay, uh next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, I I hear Dr. Taylor.
Yes.
I'm on the phone with her providing technical assistance.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
The number eight is from finance resolution to direct the city treasurer to distribute nineteen million um no nineteen thousand, I'm sorry, nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars and sixty cent of drain assessments on the twenty twenty winter tax rolls as directed by Water Resources Commissioner.
Madam Mayor, can I present this?
Yes, I do have here our treasurer uh who will present that item. Mr. Bawa.
Uh good evening, uh mayor and city council president members. Uh we received a notification from this um Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner Office that chapter four uh rain assessment payable by the city in the amount of seventy six thousand five hundred sixty two dollars and forty one cents. This total includes nineteen thousand one hundred seventy seven dollars and sixty cents. That could be spread to the property, one of that bu- border, the related drains and lakes. Uh there are five hundred fifteen non-residential parcels and six thousand three hundred eighty six on essential parcel pa- will pay this charge. Um ninety nine percent of the essential parcel will be assessed an average drain charge from twenty four cents to seventeen dollars and sixty five cents. Um alternatively, this drain assessment can be paid from the general fund to give a small relief to our residents at this difficult time. This will not have a signi- significant impact on our general fund unassigned fund balance. If the council approves, uh mayor recommends that this um uh charge be paid from the uh general fund unassigned fund balance.
President? Well, I'm just gonna talk. Yeah, um the resolution says tax rolls, but you're saying pay from the general fund. So would the resolution need to be changed?
Good evening, Councilwoman Tramsky. This is Tony Chubb. Uh the the alternatives that um that the treasurer noted were if the resolution is approved, the the um allocations or the assessments will be placed on the tax rolls. Otherwise, you can provide an alternative language that we pay the.
But that's that's what I mean asking. Do we i- i- what is the council's pleasure on this, and do we need to have a alternative resolution on hand?
There we go. I'm watching the mouse run around my house while I'm in a meeting.
A few mice are coming in.
Yeah.
Oh, they're coming in.
Okay, honey. Well, I'm just gonna see them.
I I got I bought me some of this and broke it in pieces.
There you go. Thank you. Can I have the receipt? Because then the landlord's gonna pay for this shit. Bye now.
Does the court reporter see the notice that Garland needs to uh have him be the host?
I see the the president is the host again now, so.
Well, okay.
Councilwoman Schramm.
Yes.
You got through both stacks already?
I don't. So I think he needs to mute some people because there's several conversations going on.
To to answer your question, um I it it's in the resolution, actually.
Is it? I don't see it.
It says if council agrees to this assessment, should it be paid from the general fund and the following resolution would be in order?
Yes.
Whereas the Water Resource Commissioner has notified the city.
I must have uh um the older agenda because I don't see that.
Okay, because uh so this one is subject drain assessment to be paid from the general fund? So it says now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council directed the finance director pay nineteen thousand one hundred seventy seven dollars.
Yeah, my mom doesn't say that. I must have an earlier version of this page.
Okay, so it's 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 in the resolution that it be.
Alrighty.
That it comes from the general fund. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion to approve this? Or do y'all want to wait a week?
So move.
Move to support or move to delay?
So move to go forward. That it's written to go forward, correct?
Yes.
So so move to go forward.
I don't know. Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Any discussions?
I have no idea what's going on.
Um.
This is for people who owe money to put it on the tax roll. Is that correct?
This is something we do every year.
This is every year.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Garland, you're muted, though.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was calling. Schrammsky?
Yes.
Uh Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Number nine is also for our treasurer, Mr. Bawa, to present.
Okay, can somebody call Dr. Taylor and let her know I just sent her a new invite?
Will do, sir.
Good evening, mayor and the uh city council president of the council members. Uh as part of the year and uh audit, we closely examine our outstanding receivable list. And um this uh examination identify the unpaid invoices for the grass cutting, litter cleanup, nuisance and demo uh invoices. According to the Code of Ordinance, these charges, if if remain unpaid, the city council can move to um can add to put it in the um assessing um against the re- related parcels as a um single assessment uh under section ninety eight twenty two. So um we have established a cut cut off date for Alf uh September fifteen, twenty twenty as the final date that this assessment should be paid before we upon city council authorization place them on winter tag twenty twenty tax laws. Uh current record shows that a balance outstanding for demolition is three thousand six hundred fifty dollars and for grass cutting, thirty eight thousand seven hundred five dollars and for litter cleanup, two thousand four hundred twenty five dollars and sixty cents. So if council agrees, um we can place these uh charges in the um tax role in the twenty twenty winter tax rules.
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Dransky?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
This is the uh number ten from finance resolution to approve a budget amendment to increase budgeted revenues in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to the general fund uh in account one oh one dash zero 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 dash five three two dot zero 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 grant income and appropriations in the amount of a hundred thousand to general fund account. The city has received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Canadian Foundation for Southeastern Michigan to support the development of an internal grants management process and system.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm very happy to announce this uh city has been awarded this grant a hundred thousand dollars, and this is for to extend our capacity uh to apply for grant funding and monies uh which would be available to us uh and to
build the capacity to do that again. As you know, our grants department was outsourced um several years ago. Here to present the uh proposal or the grant award is Lynette Phillips, who is our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, um ma- madam mayor and city council president and city council. We have resolution um number ten, which is in your packet. Um and I'm going to read that resolution. Um this grant has been awarded, as mayor said, um to the city um to conduct an assessment to um manage grants internally. There are no matching dollars. It's just a direct grant, and we're just asking that the um budget be amended. Whereas the city of Pontiac timely approved the twenty twenty one budget on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, whereas the city has received a grant from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan to support the development of an internal grant management process and system. And whereas the mayor is proposing to the city council to increase the budgeted revenue for the current fiscal year twenty twenty one in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for grant income and increase the appropriations in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars representing reimbursed grant expenditures. Whereas the increased appropriations will not cause the fund balance in the general fund to go below the policy mandated thresholds. And now therefore be resolved that the city council hereby approves the budget amendment to increase the budgeted revenues in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. And the account number is one oh one zero zero five three two zero zero grant income. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Well, I have a question, Mr. President. Where does it come from? There's no other information with this.
Um if I could respond to that, we actually uh submitted a resolution to accept the grant um uh some meetings ago. And then this resolution is just actually to amend the budget to accept the funds. But the grant was awarded in August.
It comes from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan.
I can read, mayor. I see where it comes from, but I don't have any documentation to go with it. I mean, it's kind of like uh Williams International throwing a hundred and fifty thousand to a budget that doesn't have any there's strings attached with grants, and there's nothing else to go with it. There's not enough information here.
The pr- the grant was submitted to city council and approved.
In August of this year.
In a in a previous resolution.
All right, I guess I need to go find the resolution. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. If there are no other questions.
Thank you. Uh is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a support?
Is that not Taylor?
That's Dr. Taylor. I have I have her on my other device.
Oh, Jesus, I'm about to have a heart attack.
Okay, has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Edela?
Yes.
Dransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays, Mr. President.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that the rules be suspended. And Attorney Chubb uh read the resolution for the LOI um with uh Dearborn International or Dearborn Capital.
So move.
For.
To suspend.
Suspending the rules.
So move to suspend the rules.
No, no, it's I say roll call. It's it's been moved. I say roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Carter? Pedala?
Yes.
Schrammsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays. Suspend the rules.
Okay, Attorney Chubb?
Thank you, Council President. Uh if the council is so inclined, I would request a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the letter of intent with Dearborn Capital LLC regarding the Phoenix Center and Ottawa Towers as dec- as discussed in closed session.
Move.
The part.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Saying now roll call.
Carter? Pedala?
Yes.
Schrammsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Four yays, one, four yays, one nay.
Okay, motion passes, I'm going to leave this meeting now, I'm going to turn the hosting duties over to Mr. Doyle. But Councilwoman Waterman can run the meeting in the absence of Pro Tem Carter.
Take care, Mr. President.
All right. I'm not hanging up on you, Dr. Taylor, but somebody else gonna have to call you, though.
Dr. Taylor, I'll call you on your home phone.
Okay, all right, thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Your call has been forwarded to an auto.
Well, you gotta get off the phone for me to call you. Dr. Taylor, you're still, your home phone is off the hook.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Door. We're on item number eleven, item eleven, and then we have public comment and closing comments.
We're gonna move forward then. Mr. Door, Madam Mayor, who do you have presenting for item number eleven?
The next one is Virinda Stokson, planning director.
Hello, good evening, Councilwoman Waterman and members of council. We're looking for your approval, if I may, to share my screen. We're looking for your approval of a resolution to amend the development, the four twenty-five development agreement from the joint development council to allow for modifications to that development agreement as relates to planet fitness signs, that's the only adjustment to the development agreement. To amend that.
No, no, thank you for, here you go.
To allow wall mounted signs to exceed the requirements by a hundred and five square feet on a thirty thousand square foot building. If I may, that building is located roughly about close to a thousand feet back from the Telegraph Road. It is labeled as item or building B that you see on your screen. They have modified it considerably of reducing the amount of signage on their building that faces Telegraph and also faces to the also faces to the south, which is faces towards Hampton Inn and Suites to accommodate just the logo itself. Plus also they have some small panel sign along Telegraph Road, and we're seeking your approval. This has been gone embedded through the JDC, which did approve. And also back in August, the Bloomfield Township trustees, board of trustees also approved this agreement which requires you to also approve it so they can go ahead with installation of these signs as they finish up the construction of this new facility at the village of Bloomfield. And I would be more happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gustanoff, any council members have any questions or concerns as it relates to the change of the signage? Okay, seeing that and being though that is my district and all the improvements that have been done over there, I have no problem with it. So if my colleagues have no problem with it, I have no problem with us moving forward.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Can I get a move and support?
You got a support from Dr. Taylor.
You don't have to suspend the rules.
Right, because I thought this is a formal meeting.
This is a formal meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, thank you.
And Doc's got the support on that.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Peterla?
Yes.
Stramski?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Okay. Waterman?
Yes.
Four yays, no nays.
Very much.
You're welcome, what is the next item on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
So the next item is a public comment.
Okay, how many public comments do we have, sir?
Three public comment.
Okay, do you have your timer on?
My glasses on, okay. First public comment is from Abigail Ennen, and this is in regards to Roshar Buildings. City council members, I reside in and own the house at seventy-eight Winona Drive, the corner of Winona and Genesee. As building department records will show, I have done a great deal of work bringing this home up to standard since my purchase in August twenty nineteen. One of my workers was approached by an ordinance officer when he was simply installing an electric line or a security light on the street side of my house. I immediately pull all permits the building department require and have otherwise comply with your building code COVID notwithstanding. Imagine my surprise when I learned that Lombardo was not required to comply with the same code when dealing with the four buildings of a single family townhouses just one third of a mile from my house. Buildings which have sat empty and decaying since before twenty fifteen, when they were ordered condemned and demolished. I have reviewed the hearing transcript from the city of Pontiac Special Hearing Officer Meeting, Roshar only Wednesday, February eleventh, twenty fifteen, and the city of Pontiac Two Special Board of Appeals meeting, Roshar only, March twenty-fifth, twenty. It is clear that the city had a great deal of city employee time and effort invested in getting these buildings condemned well before twenty sixteen. Is equally clear that someone dropped the ball since the Michigan land bank demolition program was involved in these buildings. As if the old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, is not to play in Oakland County and state of Michigan had us asserted following follow up been done in these expected, you would not be bothered by the residents of Ottawa Hills and Seminole Hills now. It is no coincidence or surprise that Lombardo is taking advantage of the COVID nineteen pandemic to swoop in under suspicious circumstances. Being working on these condemned buildings without a scrape or a single permit, a scrap of a single permit, let alone rehabilitation agreements or file plan to install very costly water service, a new water service down on the outside of the building, tap off to everyone in the units, somebody has to foot the bill for the new water service down the road, and then everybody has to pay that tap. See March twenty-fifth transcript page fifteen, Mr. Wilson. Every time the city fails to enforce its own rules, homeowners leave and Lombardo wins. Every neighborhood becomes the source of a cheap homes rip for his pickings. Do not allow Lombardo to blight my neighborhood to advance his goal of turning Pontiac into personal feathome or ill-maintained section eight housing that fails to provide the city with the tax dollars as needed to operate. The city of Pontiac has any hope of attracting homeowners with sufficient funds to improve and maintain the best houses within its borders and being something other than Lombardo's vehicle for making millions off the backs of poor people. Need to get on the stick, enforce your own demolition orders, enforce your own rehabilitation process, enforce your own building code. When dealing with buildings ordered demolished six years ago, yet someone purchased by a known slum landlord, enforce these wholeheartedly, carefully, and without favoritism. Respectfully, Abigail Ennen. Next one is from Billy Swazer. Dear citizens, I want to encourage all citizens to vote and ask everyone you know and everyone you see, did they vote? Having a voting plan and execute your plan, come to City Hall if you haven't received your ballot, get your ballot vote today. Many retirees are wondering about the superviva. Superviva has public meetings and the meetings are posted on the city's website, go to pontiac dot mi dot U S and click on search meetings and agendas or search the viva meeting, and it will let you know when the next superviva meeting is. The next meeting is scheduled for Friday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty at three P M. A Zoom meeting and the notice has both the Zoom information and the telephone information. If you want to make public comments, the notice tells you what email, send your comments to, and by what time. The superviva was started with a hundred dollar balance from the city on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The GERS is scheduled to be terminated on April first, twenty twenty-one. The new reestablished GERS is to begin. The access of over one hundred and thirty percent of the current GERS liability will be transferred to the superviva to fund retiree healthcare at some point in the future, the police and fire viva and its monies should be combined with the superviva. Right now, the one hundred dollar balance does not allow sufficient monies for the superviva to organize higher staff, attorneys, auditors, accountants, or such things as necessary for it to properly function. I am sure for the first or second quarter of twenty twenty-one, the viva will contact retirees about their options for healthcare or to permanently opt out of healthcare benefits. Watch the superviva meeting and you will find out about what is happening, Billy Swazer. And then the last one is Larry Jasper. Says, dear people of Pontiac, today Randy Carter Pro Tem should take over the city council as acting president. Our condolences for Kermit Williams' family, as President Carter will be announcing an emergency resolution to guarantee the city to not default on a settlement agreement by joining forces with Omega in a partnership to acquire the Ottawa Power one and two and to create little city franchise development. Pontiac citizens have a ten-point preference for the jobs. We shall hire the local workforce for construction, operation, hospitality, R and D interacting with current technology systems and more. The city shall be paid back its entire investment in a couple of years. The bonus of the little cities is that it will provide an equity interest in the mixed-use development for the impacted city residents. Also, the city will see additional revenue sources through the running of the franchise and local businesses and workforce growth. The little city should be incorporating the fastest wifi cloud housing systems. The partnerships will have a cost reduction for their systems and their use, which will be passed on to the local communities as well. At wholesale prices, not retail. Training and education for all positions will be paid during the process, and their childcare should be provided at no cost to the workforce. We have an unbelievable back pandemic that is affecting the entire community. But the council is responding to its constituents and have found a way to provide good paying jobs, entertainment, and technological advances for its people. The partnership keeps the city strong with an economic solution for the local crisis, little cities where American dreams are reborn. Omega shall forge contracts with the local hospitals, medical facilities to establish a digital medical monitoring system for members and stockholders through its cloud hosting systems to ensure everyone is keeping healthy, safe, educationally, and economically strong. Omega is excited and enthusiastic to enter this partnership with the city of Pontiac, working with the council to establish the first little city in the use of the opportunity zone to benefit the people of Pontiac. Omega believes the citizens make up its hardened soul of this community is going to make them part of it by holding stock in its operations. We are counting on the community to stop like this project as an example for other inner cities can change their lives so those people can get their fair share of equity interest in the local mixed-use development. The people have earned it through the payment of city, state, and federal taxes. It, this is your money and not the politicians. It worked for the people, not the other way around. Your ex-council member George Williams said it best, I love Omega's partnership proposal because everyone wins, no matter what. We agree, even though it's last minute, God is great. We look forward to creating a great team and partnership to take us into the twenty-first century. Your destiny is in your hands, synergy, one team, endless results, God bless everyone, Larry Jasper, CEO. That concludes public comment. I'll submit, Chairman Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, now we come to closing comments, Madam Mayor. Mr. Clerk, put the timer on, please.
Okay, all right.
Oh, good evening, everyone, I am oh, one minute, I got a little glitch here and getting back into the meeting here, let's see what's going on. Okay, there we go, so, good evening, everyone, this was momentous evening for us. And I'm not going to take full time with there are some announcements I want to make, first, the elections are very important. I'm so glad that people have responded to all the efforts that was made both by the clerk's office and all the people to make sure we got the messaging out to vote early and have a plan. And we are all hands on board, administration, all my office, we have had many people in my office working concurrently with the clerk to make sure that people have the right to vote in Pontiac that is not only accessible, but it is assured their vote will count and we'll get it into the ballot boxes. Do not mail your ballots after today because we may not get to the clerk's office, it must be in the clerk's office by November the third. And then we're doing things to make sure our polls are secure, both from COVID as well as from any thoughts of intimidation or anything that would prevent the accessibility of voting rights to our voters in Pontiac. Secondarily, I would just like to say that the Pyrex Pontiac Youth Recreation Center is announcing its reopening. Done that very carefully since it was closed for the pandemic by the emergency order. But it's reopening with a spectacular open house on Thursday, October twenty-ninth, from six to eight P M, right at our own Pyrex Center. It does require registration because of the limitations proposed by COVID, but they will be well decorated, people will come and see what it is that they're going to be offering in terms of the reopening of programs. And then the official reopening date is November the second, people can register for that online. Because of the fact that so many children are still going to school virtually, we are going to extend the hours instead of just having them after school. We will also have hours, you see, starting from seven thirty A M to six P M in the morning to accommodate those, particularly the essential workers and people who are trying to juggle both the children being virtually at some schools, most schools as a matter of fact, and trying to maintain their jobs. So there are lots of partnerships that we've formed, and you'll be able to enroll for that online, the numbers are here, and we have them in all our usual Facebook, website, Pyrex website as well, for people to get more information about that. And last, I would like to say to the council, we have made a giant step with the votes that the council has taken today and last Tuesday as well to again bring this saga that we've had about the Phoenix Center.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Clerk?
I'll be brief, Madam Chair, just to, in the mayor's, someone talked about it already, just to remind everybody. On next Tuesday, November third, is election day polls will be open from seven A M until eight P M. Still are encouraging everyone to vote absentee, you can vote absentee all the way up until Monday, November second at four P M. At four P M is the cutoff for absentee voting. We will be open every day this week until eight P M, and then on Saturday and Sunday, we will be open from nine A M until four P M. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Attorney Sharp?
I don't have anything, have a good evening, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor Burks? Councilwoman Taylor Burks? Councilwoman Peterla?
Um, yes, sir, or yes, ma'am, I don't know if you heard me, Councilwoman Taylor Burke said she passes, she was on my phone during meeting. And I was muted, so I'm sorry, it didn't cross. Um, I just want to thank the council for the passing the resolution that we passed last week for our heroes. They all received their resolution, they all say thank you very much. I passed out the last two to Kenestelle and to C J Waldron this morning as they just came back to work today. So everybody else received theirs last week, and they thank you, and I thank you very much for passing them out. That child was one in my district, so it had a little bit more special meaning to it. Um, with that, I want to apologize for the interruption on my phone. I, the weather has changed and I found a little field mice while I'm sitting here during the meeting, and I just decided I had to go. So I was down at Family Dollar getting a mousetrap while I was paying attention to the meeting, I do apologize for the interruption. Thank you, Waterman, for letting, or Councilwoman Waterman, for letting me know that although I thought my phone was on mute, it was not. Other than that, I just want to say, get ready for the weather, obviously it's changing. So let's stay warm, stay safe, and please don't forget your mask, it's still very important. So, let's stay warm, stay safe, and please don't forget your mask, it's still very important. Thank you so much, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Stramske?
Uh, yes, I am very pleased to have so many vocal and caring, very vocal and caring residents. If you may have ascertained from the public comments from my district, uh, we are having a problem with Rossshire Court. He was working without permits, no rehab agreement, no bond payment, et cetera. But, um, the rehab agreement has been finished, it has been presented to him. It's under review by his insurance company because he has to post a big sure- surety bond. So, once that is done, and the surety bond is issued, team inspections and permits will follow. Now, my residents and I are requesting a site plan that he go through planning, and the reason I'm stating this is, uh, he is in particularly need of a site plan for parking, there is inadequate parking, and there's also not any kind of buffer between this, uh, these buildings and the adjacent residents. So, uh, stay tuned, and I'm just very thankful for all your comments and your input and for putting the pressure on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, I'm just going to end by saying thank you all for, uh, putting whatever thoughts or feelings you had aside, and we moved forward for the betterment of the city of Pontiac, and I would just ask that the executive team make sure that they contact, uh, the president to let him know about the mediation or whatever your arbitration that you're planning on doing tomorrow at ten o'clock, so that the council will be apprised of what's going forward. And with that, I'm going to say good night, adjourned this meeting at eight ten.